I'll call the meeting into order and invite you to join us with the pleasure of allegiance. Roll call.
Colpak?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Turnberg?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Got to get the right folder. Happy St. Patrick's Day, anyway. This evening, we are continuing our effort to showcase and highlight each of our city departments and everything they do to serve our residents 24/7/365. At the beginning of the commission meeting, we are taking time to honor an individual department and their staff for their dedication, hard work, and customer service that makes local government work for all of us. We are looking forward to sharing this information with our community and continue to show our commitment to going above and beyond for our residents. Tonight, we are highlighting the City of Fargo's Transit Department, which operates Matbus services in Fargo, West Fargo, Moorhead, and Delworth. Every day, Matbus employees are focused on ensuring that the residents get to work, school appointments, wherever they need to be, in a timely and efficient manner. Matbus is a vital piece of our workforce engine that drives our economics and makes Fargo community an amazing place to live. Matbus employees keep Fargo running on all cylinders. We will now share a video that underscores the Transit Department's exceptional work.
Matbus offers three different modes of transportation for the residents of Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo, and Delworth. We have our fixed route service, which is our large buses that go around all the different cities on predetermined routes. They have predetermined times, so you can take a look at matbus.com to see exactly when those buses are arriving at those particular stops. We also offer paratransit services for residents with either physical or cognitive disabilities. With that, people can preapply with us to be able to utilize a service, and it will take you anywhere within those four different cities. And then last, we have our on-demand service, which is sort of like an Uber or Lyft type thing, where passengers can download an app and with that, request a pickup and drop-off destination within some predetermined zones that we have, and then our vehicle will come and get you and bring you to your destination. Our entire system last year had approximately 1.2 million rides, so if you think about how many vehicles that would be on the road if people were driving individually, it does help to reduce a lot of the wear and tear on roads just based on those sheer numbers, and it also can help to reduce some congestion around Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo, and Delworth areas. Preventive maintenance is one of the main things that our maintenance staff performs on a daily basis. Buses are inspected about every 5,000 miles, which turns out to be about every four to six weeks. Some items are replaced on a schedule, some of the high-failure items, just to prevent a breakdown on the road. The buses are replaced on a 12-year schedule. Obviously, you know, an older bus is more costly to maintain, so staying up to date on our replacement schedule and making sure those buses are replaced as close to 12 years as possible helps us to really control our operational maintenance costs. Every day, the drivers will perform before they go on route, a pre-trip inspection of the bus. They also perform a post-trip inspection of the bus after their shift is over. We have actually some new software that utilizes digital inspection, so the drivers do their inspection on the vehicle, and then they perform that inspection and mark any notes on the inspection digitally on the tablets in their buses. That new system allows for real-time information to be shared with operations staff and then also our maintenance staff, which makes for quicker response times when defects are found, and then allows the shop to prioritize those repairs as the buses come off route at the end of the night. On our fixed route side, we have our live tracker, which residents can go on to our website and take a look at that. Like I said, it gives you the exact time of bus arrivals, so you get to see the bus traveling on the live tracker as well as accurate arrival and departure times. This is a very affordable option for people to be able to get around. It's a good option for people who unfortunately don't have the highest incomes and were able to offer a way to get around town, still be able to get groceries, be able to get to work, you know, make daily commutes, or even go out for a little bit of fun. Matbus gives a good opportunity for people to still maintain a pretty good sense of independence on a budget. Once a year, we have what we call a Try Matbus Week, so all of our routes are free to everyone in the community, so if you haven't tried out public transit, we definitely encourage you to do that. That'll be coming up October, and we'll definitely be sending out some information to people ahead of time.
As we spotlight the achievements of our city departments, we are instituting an honor of city employees called the Fargo Rising Star Award. In each department, the award-go-to-employee has been with the City of Fargo for seven years or less and has gone above and beyond in their service to the community. Tonight, we will bestow the Rising Star Award to a recipient chosen by the leadership of the Transit Department. The award goes to Andrew Almer. Andrew has worked with the Fixed Route Dispatcher for Matbus for more than three years. In his role, he monitors daily bus schedules, provides customer service, logs incidents, and ensures communication between staff and management. He also tracks vehicles' locations using software and two-way radios, completes reports, and coordinates with the various transit personnel to maintain efficient service across the metro area. Andrew previously worked for the city's transit contractor, Transdev, as a dispatcher, road supervisor, and bus operator. Andrew is known for making initiatives beyond his job responsibilities. He has identified areas of improvement in transit operation and offered solutions to enhance their efficiency. His passion for public transit and his commitment to serving Fargo citizens set him apart. Congratulations, Andrew. Please come up for the Fargo Rising Star. I didn't know you brought your own fan club. Isn't that nice? Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 3, 2025 regular meeting?
I move. We approve the very first minutes ever written by Laura.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 23?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak? Aye. Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Regular agenda. Is there a motion to set the Board of Equalizations meeting at 7:30 Tuesday, April 8, 2025?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes. Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We have some time. Next thing that is not a public hearing is item 33, Recommendation for Commissioner Strand, a direct city administrator and city attorney in Human Resources Department to research full-time mayor effective July 1, 2026. Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know we've all discussed this informally over time. I know that the, in our governance procedures with Dr. Schatz, we visited this topic. I don't know where the rest of the commission lies with this topic, but my sense is now's the time to have this conversation with an election next summer. And with, you know, with our current mayor being termed out, if we're going to explore and research and vet having a full-time mayor, whatever that would look like, how that would end up being, in my head, now's the time to do that. So I advance this motion to direct administration and staff and legal to formalize that proposal and bring it back to us.
Is that your motion?
It is my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Colpak?
Excuse me, I just swallowed wrong. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Strand, I would like to add an amendment that also studies the possibility of adding two additional city commissioners, because from the research we just recently received from the Community Engagement Survey, it clearly is something that the community wants us to take a look at from those results, and I think it would be a great addition to that research at this time, with a growing city and growing responsibilities across the board.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Pepcorn?
Mr. Chair, apparently you've missed the memo. We're in a process of reducing bureaucracy in government, not expanding it, and I think the first question, if we're going to go ahead with this, is how much is all this going to cost? Because obviously, it's going to cost a lot. You'd have to add staff for supporting commissioners, and for a full-time mayor, what's the salary going to be? And so, to me, we're in the process of reducing spending, and this flies in the face of that, so apparently, we've missed the memo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Two parts to this. The amendment would be to go to, to explore the element of the seven people. The thought process on your part, Commissioner Strand, is the cost would be revealed during that. Basically, they'd bring back to us the cost to pressure Pepcorn's concerns, then at that time, it could be discussed whether we thought we should proceed.
Exactly right, Mayor. I would like to know, what are we looking at? What could it be? How would it be implemented? What would be the implications and consequences of that? And cost, of course, is one of them.
Agreed.
Chambers are higher. We are set upstairs, and the offices for seven people. We had extra offices placed there at one time because we thought that might happen. So the first motion was to look into also seven members on the commission. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Colpak? Aye. Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
The second part is to look into mayor, the consequences of that, and that would be the first motion that John advanced. Do we have any other discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
I will go, I can start some of the motions at our public hearings that are not going to move forward. So, public hearing 25 is withdrawn, and I have no motion necessary. Donald Kress, Donald Kress, Megan, all these require a public hearing. Overtime policies, I assume it's going to take some time. Oh, I can do 32 continued because that moves forward with no public hearing. So, public, item 32, hearing to reconsider renewal plan and development agreement with Skyline Roars Tax Security and Finance District 2018-03, and this is a motion to continue this to 33125. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I wouldn't need any discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Turnberg? Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
So now, I would ask Donald just to come to the podium and get ready for this one. 26 is going to be a public hearing. It's a vacation plat of portions to 22nd Street North, a remainder of Avenue North lying west of 21st Street North and Block 34 East West Alley, all originally dedicated to Beardsley Edition, line between 7th and 8th Avenues North, and approval recommended by Planning Commission on 6424, continued from the regular 3325 meeting. And Donald Kress, you have 14 seconds to wait, and then you can start.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brief note on item 25. That item will be re-noticed in the future for city commission. There now, it's 5:15.
Okay, now you're on.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress with the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items. As the mayor has stated, our first item, agenda item 26, is Beardsley's Edition, a vacation of right-of-way. The lengthy legal description is there, but where it is, this is 7th Avenue North, 8th Avenue North, 22nd Street North, you know, as, you know, railroad in here, 25th Street's just off the edge here, and this right-of-way may look familiar to you. You reviewed the vacation of the west portion of this back in July of 2024. Here's what the area to be vacated looks like. This is facing south from 8th Avenue and facing north from 7th Avenue. The alley would actually start at the, or the street would actually start where this entryway is. As you see, it's being used by the adjacent property owners already. This apparently has never been used as a street. It was dedicated in two parts. The part you're looking at vacating tonight was dedicated in 1881, and the earlier part, the part that you vacated earlier, was dedicated in 1951. So we vacate them in the reverse order. We think this is the only street like this in Fargo, so we won't have to go through a lot with that. Here are some views. We're also vacating a portion of the alley that goes out to 21st Street. That's this alley here. That's included in the vacation plat. That's that alley. As you see, the zoning here is all LI, limited industrial, with industrial uses. And the plat looks like this, the area to be vacated. There are some city and other private utilities there for which an agreement, or an easement has been reserved, as noted in, as noted, and the vacations of right-of-way are done pursuant to North Dakota Century Code. That is, they're not in our ordinance, North Dakota Century Code 4039. The recommended motion is shown in your staff report and stated on the screen. The applicant, Tim Vanderson, of John T. Jones Construction, is here tonight and may wish to address the commission, and the commission appreciates the applicant's patience and the cooperation of the Cass County Recorder in working through this complex plat. Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes Staff's presentation.
Is there anyone in the President who wishes to speak to the vacation of this plat? Any President wants to speak? If not, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 27, Appeal of Planning Commission Decision on 2425 to deny conditional use permit to allow group living in a single-dwelling residential zoning district, Lot 11, Block 9, Edgewood Section, is 2013 Forest Avenue North. Donald Kress to explain, and just so the Commissioners understand, if you do go for the appeal to take four out of the five of us to vote for it, if you'll vote against the planning recommendation. Donald, go ahead.
Mayor, I believe our city attorney has an intro here.
After further consideration, it does not require a supermajority.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, well, you've been corrected. Go ahead, Donald.
Yes, sir. Thank you. As the mayor stated, this is an appeal. This doesn't come before your commission very often. Maybe once every two or three years, you get an appeal from a decision of the Planning Commission on a conditional use permit. Conditional use permits go before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is the final decision-maker for conditional use permits. If one side or the other wishes to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission, they come to the city commission. The property in question here is 213 Forest Avenue, and the conditional use permit was a proposal to allow more than three unrelated people to live in a single, a single individual dwelling unit in the SR2 zone. Our zoning ordinance limits the number of unrelated people who can live in a single unit to three, and here, the proposal is for five folks to live there. The Planning Commission denied the conditional use permit, their February 4th, sorry, their March, sorry, February 4th Planning Commission, and the applicant appealed the decision in the appropriate time, and so the appeal comes before your commission tonight. Again, the aerial location here, Forest Avenue, Edgewood, Elm Street is just off the edge over here. Longfellow School is over here. Some views of the residence here. As you see, it's a single-family detached residence here, a couple of different views, and a couple more recent photos just up and down Forest Avenue, as you see here. The zoning here is SR2, single-dwelling residential. And just as a reference, Commissioners, these are the findings that appear in your staff report. This conditional use permit requires two sets of findings. One is the general conditional use permit approval criteria, that is, 1 through 5 here, and then there's a specific set of criteria for group living in the SR zone property, which is listed here. The responses to all these are in your staff report. These are just up here for your reference. The property owner bought the house at 213 Forest Avenue for his son and four of his friends to live in. The application for a CUP for group living came forward as a result of a zoning violation that was brought to the attention of the city's inspections department in July 2024. The violation was that more than three unrelated persons are living in a single residential unit. As we discussed, the Land Development Code prohibits more than three unrelated persons from living in an individual dwelling unit. The applicant applied for the CUP in November 2024. The CUP was originally scheduled for the Planning Commission hearing on January 7, 2025. The applicant requested that hearing be continued, as he was unable to make it to that hearing. The applicant lives out of state action at the February 4 Planning Commission, as summarized in your staff report. The Planning Commission decided by a vote of 7 to 0, with four Commissioners absent, to deny the application of the CUP. The applicant's appeal of that decision is before you tonight. Planning, in addition to the comments that are in your staff report, planning staff received an additional phone call on Friday from a neighboring property owner expressing opposition to the CUP. The applicant's representative, Mr. Drew Hushka of Vogel Law Firm, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. And, Mr. Mayor, just so you're aware, there are others here who may wish to testify both in support and in opposition to this item as well. The recommended motion is stated on the screen. Commissioners, please note that this is slightly worded differently than the motion that was in your staff report. A discussion with the city attorney made a little more precise wording here, so if your commission would wish to follow the recommended motion, please use the one on the screen. That concludes Staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, Donald. So, anyone in the President who wishes to address this issue?
Thank you. As indicated, I am Attorney Drew Hushka of the Vogel Law Firm. I have been retained by Connecting Point LLC, the owner of this property in respect to this appeal. As indicated by Mr. Kress, the issue before this commission is whether or not to approve the conditional use permit requested for this property located in SR2, a single-family dwelling unit. To approve the conditional use request, there are five factors for the commission to consider. Factor number two, I want to circle back around to factor number one, but factor number two is whether or not the proposed conditional use permit in the specific location would contribute to and promote the welfare of the public. As this commission knows, there is a student housing issues around North Dakota State University. Recently, in February, the commission approved a TIF to help address that, to build a large-scale residential unit, but that does not going to solve it initially, and there is ongoing student housing issues, and this conditional use permit, while it's not going to solve it in and of itself, will help add to the student housing, at least on a case-by-case basis. Additionally, as you heard, there are numerous members of the neighborhood that are supportive of this request, and the materials before the commission, the, were 15 that spoke out in favor, as opposed to only nine in opposition of this. In other words, over 70% of the neighborhood supports the conditional use requests. There are additional members of the neighborhood here, I believe, that may offer testimony as well, expressing their support for the conditional use permit requested in this case. The conditional use permit would benefit the neighborhood and the student housing in general. On factor number three, whether or not the proposed conditional use permit will cause substantial injury to the property values. As found in the report, quote, "No data to suggest," end quote, "that this would harm housing valuations in this neighborhood." We respectfully ask that this court agree with, or that the commission agree with that, and there's nothing that would indicate any of the houses around here would be financially harmed because of this. Indeed, this is a five-bedroom house where there is supposed to be, where five people are seeking to live. It's actually going to coincide with what it was intended to be when it was built. Five people living in a five-bedroom house, this isn't atypical from what this was constructed to be. Factor number four is whether or not the location and size is consistent or whether it would dominate the neighborhood. Again, there are no requested changes that are being made to this unit. It is a single bedroom, it is a single-unit house, but the house has five bedrooms. There simply seeks to be five people living in this. It's not going to have to be enlarged. It's not going to dominate the neighborhood. They're simply asking for, to allow someone to reside in every bedroom that is in this unit. The final, or factor number five, is whether or not there's adequate utilities, drainage, and other necessary such facilities. There is nothing in the commission indicating that there would be further drains on sewer or any of the utilities for five people staying in a five-bedroom house. The final factor to consider is whether or not the proposed conditional use permit would comply with the Land Development Code, and as indicated, there's actually specific specifications and factors to be considered for group housing. As outlined in Section 20-04-02, there are four different factors to consider for a conditional use permit for a group housing. First is whether or not the dwelling meets all building codes. The permit of occupancy or certificate of occupancy was recently issued in August of 2024, indicating at the time that this unit does meet all building codes, and so that factor is satisfied. Next factor is whether or not there has been sufficient off-street parking for this unit, and this, I believe, is an issue of consternation and, I think, what drew most of the testimony at the February hearing. Specifically, there is a two-garage stall, and one vehicle could park in the driveway. There are five people living here, but they have worked out with neighbors the ability to park in neighboring driveways. If the commission were to look at the commission report, specifically on page number 21, the overhead shot indicating of this neighborhood, and the house directly to the east, there are at least five vehicles parked at that house. There's three in the driveway, there's one parked out front, there's one parked to the side, there's no indicating whether or not there's any parked in the garage there. And so, again, other units, there are other houses in this neighborhood have more than three vehicles. Across Edgewood Drive, there's a driveway with four vehicles parked in that driveway at the same time this is taken. It's anecdotal, but in the summer of 2007, I moved back home for the summer while I was in college. At that time, there were five houses, there were five vehicles at that house. My father had a vehicle, my mother had a vehicle, I had one, my younger brother in high school had a vehicle, and my parents bought a sports car as an anniversary gift to each other. There were five vehicles there, but because we were all related, it didn't matter because we were one household under the definition. If you want to enforce parking variances, the issue is not whether, the issue is whether or not five-bedroom houses should be approved. Again, there's simply one person living in one bedroom. If this was a house with adult children staying with them, it could be the same amount of people, the same amount of vehicles, it could be more vehicles, and it would be perfectly permitted under the conditional use permit. And so, again, I don't believe that parking is a situation that should make or break this. Factor number C is whether or not the general condition of the building is appropriate. Again, the certificate of occupancy was issued less than a year ago. Even the report indicates that there's no issues with that. The final issue is whether or not the requested document C is compatible with the neighborhood or create undue congestion. Again, more than 70% of the neighborhood favors this conditional use permit. There's going to be vehicles there, but there's no more vehicles than there are bedrooms in this unit. Simply stating, this is a proper request, it's a conditional use request, but under the Land Development Code, it is a conditional use for group living in SR2 neighborhoods. We're asking that, in this case, that condition be approved. It's consistent with the Land Development Code. Now, before the Planning Commission, there were primary concerns, I believe, of whether or not, if we approve it in this case, if this is going to be a parade of horribles, if this is going to be, lead to case after case after case of people wanting to have more than five people living together, and what is that going to do to our neighborhoods of people having disparate schedules and driving this place and that place and everything else at all hours of the day? In this case, those concerns are alleviated. While they don't meet the traditional definition of a family, for all intents and purposes, the five individuals residing at this house are a family. It's not a secret, obviously, it's been in the paper, that these are NDSU student athletes. They're on the same team together, they go to class together, they go to practice together, they go to trainings together, they go to meetings together, they spend more time together than the majority of us, unfortunately, get to spend with our blood families. They have conditions, they have schedules that are consistent with each other. They're not going to be leaving at different hours of the day if these are five people that just decided to be roommates out of a wanted ad or a Craigslist ad. These are five student athletes that are going to have relatively consistent schedules with each other. That's going to be no different than it would be for any other family of five individuals that would be staying in this case. Moreover, the conditions that are being requested in this case is perfect for making sure that this doesn't proliferate out of control. Again, they have found parking for these extra vehicles at neighboring places. They have found, they have addressed the concerns that this, or that the commission had below about how to address these issues, and strictly stating, it's going to be strenuous for any other conditional use permit applicant to be able to actually meet the conditions to be able to actually meet the conditions that they have been willing to put on themselves to meet the concerns that have been raised of neighbors. So respectfully, unless there's any questions from any one on the commission, that is my, like I said, presentation. I understand that there may be neighbors that may or may not be speaking as well.
Standby, House, please speak.
Hi, I'm Colleen Larson. I did not plan to speak today, but I really believe that they're good men. Take care of things. If you ever live by a byzantine rule, you know you better not screw up. Next, I'm one over on Edgewood and three north. Next door to me, south, I did have five guys living next door to me. Of course, new neighbors, you're always kind of nervous. These turned out to be five of the most amazing men. All I asked was not to park between our driveways and one above, so at least my snowplow could plow me out. I never, and they honored that. And I never, ever knew they had, if they had a party, I don't know, or if they had people over. It was so quiet. And I'm sure you have conditions on this exception, and maybe one, two, three, and then you're out, but, you know, it's kind of like school. You got to be reasonable for the kids. And if someone's going to say something, you'll at least check it out. And I know I had one more thing. I would love them to live next door to me. I think that's it.
Thank you. Is there somebody else?
Hello, my name is Denise. I'm their neighbor to the west, and they now park in my driveway because I have extra space. I'm hoping you'll grant that conditional use permit. A couple of things that got brought up at the planning and zoning is, one, that they were planning to look into this exact subject matter, because there's a lot of homes that a lot of college kids are renting, and they're going over and above the three unrelated. It's just not reported, and they get away with it, so to speak. These gentlemen are trying to do it the right way and get the permit to do so. So a couple of things that were brought up was the utility usage, and I myself have four children. So I can basically kind of say that my children have separate sets of friends. And when they have their friends over, not only are we parked on the street, and we take up a lot of parking at the age they are now, but they use the utilities. They don't have the same set of friends where this group next door actually probably has more of the same set of friends because they're the team, they're together. They are up early for practice, for work, for school. They've lived there for, what, nine months now? I don't hear anything from them. There's no parties, there's no loud music, there's, you know, no disturbances. I love having them for neighbors. They've caused less disturbances than some of the families that are, you know, legally allowed to live there, that have been there. So I'm just asking for that. And then the other, let's see what I had. The other thing that came up at the other meeting too is that it's possible to do like a timeline, the conditional use, that you can grant it for six months or a year and revisit it. So it's not binding that if it doesn't work out, it can get denied at a later time. So I'm asking that you even consider that, give them a chance to prove themselves, give them a chance to show that, yes, this does work, it can happen. This is a viable option to help take care of these students and give them a place to live. So I ask that you approve this. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wants to speak?
My name is David Slack. I'm speaking on behalf of the people that oppose the, allowing them to have five people in the house and not go by the city code that was in place when they bought the house. And we, the petition that we got was signed by people that live within the 300 feet. There were people that signed, sent emails and letters in opposition. And we're asking that you stand behind the Fargo Planning and Development's recommendation that you deny this. The planning commission, it was seven to oh that they denied it. And we're asking that you back your staff and your committees and deny this also for the group living. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak today.
Donald, could you put up the suggested motion, please?
Sir.
We'll close the public hearing, or do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I make a comment?
Can I get a second first?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Turnberg.
So I went to school in Fargo Moorhead and had to live with six other girls in a house. And that was common up and down the street. The biggest issue is probably parking, but we made efforts to make sure we utilized the garage. We were right next to people who own their homes, single-family homes, to use the garage, to use the driveway, and to have a little extra parking, because it seems like that's what really sets people off. I couldn't have gone to college without splitting rent like that. And it's my understanding this ordinance was set in the 50s. Is that true?
Donald, when was the ordinance set?
The current ordinance dates from 1999, ma'am. The concept of no more than three people has been in our ordinances since the 1950s, but it is also in, specifically in the 1950s.
The difference being from when I was going to college and having all those girls in one house being that we had more of a slumlord, and I believe the father bought the house. Is that correct? So I guarantee you, these gentlemen are not going to be damaging the house or devaluing it. So that, to me, would give enough assurances to neighbors that this is probably an investment piece, and they want to keep the value. So been there, done that, went through it, and I support you guys. I know it goes against what the planning commission is proposing, but I understand the problem. And I think as long as you prove yourself to be genuine gentleman, that it sounds like you already have been, that it wouldn't be a problem.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Mr. Chair, so 43 years ago, in 1982, 1116 College Street, I was the captain of the football team at North Dakota State, and my dad bought a house for us to rent. And so I had four guys, so I am those guys. And I had four guys, and we, we did not behave as well as they did. I can speak for that. And so my, I feel bad because I am you. And I, and I know, now they do, they are good citizens, and they're great neighbors, but the rules are the rules. And so to me, if, there's a couple of options. First of all, three of you can live there. And if you would have looked at the rules, you could have bought a duplex, and we wouldn't have had this issue. So I'm very conflicted, I'll put it that way, because part of the reason this was probably put into place was because of my bad behavior and my teammates' bad behavior back in the day. But the rules are the rules, and you got to do that. And Lord knows, North Dakota State football has done more for Fargo and for the state of North Dakota than anything. And the way you behave, you're role models, and you've done more for our state than we can ever say. But the difficult thing is, this is the precedent, and you got to follow the rules. So I reluctantly have to vote in favor of this because those are the rules. And so it's very challenging, and I feel bad about it, but that's, that's what you got to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Yes, I'll just add, this is, this is a tough one, because, you know, there's clearly the behavior has modeled behavior, but I too am concerned about the precedent this is setting. I know there was lengthy discussion at the planning commission, but it did pass seven zero, excuse me. And I will say, I have only heard from neighbors who are concerned about having five renters in a, in a, in a primary home neighborhood as well. So it has been very much against approving this. So those are my comments.
Okay. Mr. Pepcorn.
Just one more thing, Mr. Chair. The other thing is, our inspections department, we consistently enforce this. So this is not like something that was targeted or anything like that. We respond, the inspections, if you get a call from a neighbor, they go and inspect the issue. And so this is not something where we were, we go out and pursue this. This was, maybe you can talk a little bit about that, Don, just real quick.
Commissioners, what Commissioner Pepcorn has stated is correct. Our, our inspections, our zoning enforcement is complaint-based. And so the inspections department did get a call on this, I believe, back in July. Mr. Aradnik, our inspections director, is with us this evening. That was in July, is that correct? And that was the original complaint, that there were more than three living there. The applicant, as part of that, was offered an option, which he has taken to apply for a conditional use permit to allow more than three. And then, as you know, the rest of it here was denied by the planning commission and is now before your commission.
Any other discussion?
Is this just to get the gentlemen through college, or is this going to continue? So they've already been living there for nine months with no complaints, it sounded like, from neighbors? Can we give them the go-ahead to live there, finish out their college, and then reevaluate?
Ms. Morris, you want to?
Nancy, is there an option for that, or?
Well, all I can say is that the ordinance doesn't provide for that on a temporary basis. It's either a grant or a deny of a conditional use permit. If there are considerations of terms for that conditional use permit, it should be returned to planning commission for further consideration. But that would be my recommendation.
I mean, we extend camping. Why can't we make an exemption and let these gentlemen, if there hasn't been any problems? I could see if neighbors were upset and there were parties, which my neighbors were probably upset. So it seems to me like they've been ideal neighbors.
I think the only way you'd solve that is perhaps if you suggested an amendment to the motion in which you're asking them not to enforce it until end of school year.
And is it just this school year? Maybe another? So it would be another school year? Not through May, but through '25, '26?
Well, that part I don't think it's, the discussion here today is whether three or more people can live in an apartment. If we affirm the planning commission, then the answer is three is all, it could be the apartment.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Strand.
If Nicole or maybe Donald, you can answer this. With CGB and our strategic planning going on right now, is this on the table? Is this a proposal that's advancing? Is this something that they're vetting? Or is this a one-off and?
Commissioner, I'm going to step aside and let Nicole Kreuzfelder, our planning director, respond to that one.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, I think as the testimony from the attorney mentions, we understand housing is an issue, and it's a nationwide issue. Definitely, this is an item that will be discussed as part of our land development code rewrites. You know, this is, when we look at the state of zoning and how zoning was used in the 50s and through today, it's evolving into something different. So this will be a topic as we talk about in terms of group living. I will make the distinction too between single-family zoning district and multifamily zoning district. Much of the north side, especially around NDSU, is multifamily zoning district. And so the group living category in single-family zoning district is distinct from the multifamily zoning district. Even though it could be a house, look like a house, look like a single-family neighborhood, the zoning might be slightly different.
Might I continue? If, just theoretically, if this, if a home in a neighborhood like that became a space that's Airbnb'd all the time with numbers of people, how would that compare to this issue?
Great question. I'll just go back to the comment, this is complaint-driven. So inspections wouldn't have even gone to this as a review and inspection if we weren't getting the complaints. We wouldn't be here in front of you today if we weren't getting complaints.
Nicole, can you?
Mr. Turnberg.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Can we, do we have visibility to what the complaints are about?
Yeah, and that's where I'll call on Donald and maybe Sean to talk through those complaints.
John Radnik, you want to step up?
I'll start. So the, having more than three people living in, unrelated people living in a single dwelling unit is a violation of the zoning ordinance. That's just a land use ordinance. And those complaints are handled by the inspections department. They have a code enforcement staff there, and they do most of the, you know, work doing the inspecting, so on. And so I'll turn that over to Mr. Aradnik, and he can give a background on what has been done since July of '24 and the nature of the inspections, ma'am.
Yes, our inspectors did go out there to look at the house. And when we first got out there to take a look at, they did have amongst the zoning violations of three or more unrelated, they did have some construction violations or some building code violations that they did remedy. So they do have, they are up to snuff on the building code at this point. But again, we went out there for follow-up inspections. We checked things out, and at one time we did go in there, and they were in compliance. There were, from what we could see, three bedrooms being used, and the other two are not. We did receive some more complaints from the neighborhood and stuff, saying that there were still five people living there. So we did try and conduct one more inspection, a drop-in inspection, just kind of a little surprise thing to see what was actually going on with the property and stuff. We were denied access. So as of our last inspection, they were in compliance, but after talking to the planning commission and stuff, through the planning commission, they are not in compliances today. So we do receive a number of these every year. We go out there and investigate every one of them. Some of them are founded, some of them are not founded. We never look at the people that are there. We always look at the ordinance, we always look at the codes. They may be great gentlemen and things, but as it is for our department, they are violating our land development code. So that's why we have to push it forward, and that's why we end up coming to things like this and bringing it before you people.
So it's not like there were loud parties or eruptions of disruption in the neighborhood? It's just that it's going against the ordinance, and people were probably watching to see who's going in and out?
Yeah, and most of what we received as complaints was due to parking and things like that. Whether they had friends there or not, whether it was them, we're not sure. We don't see what they're complaining about at that snapshot in time. We only see what we see when we're there. And as it is, they have some parking spaces, and I understand the neighbors are letting them park and stuff. But again, that does violate the ordinance. It's, it's still three unrelated people living in a, in a house that, in a zoning district where it's not allowed.
Any other discussion? For a call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Culpack?
Aye.
Turnberg?
No.
Mahoney?
Yes. Application 28, Renaissance Zone Rehabilitation Broken for DH Ventures, the rehabilitation of commercial property, 508, 510, 512 Broadway North.
Good evening, commissioners. I have three items in front of you tonight for a Renaissance Zone review. So the first item is the 508, 510, and 512 Broadway North. This is to rehabilitate a commercial building. The intent of the project is to renovate the existing building into five commercial spaces, accessing this from the, converting the overhead doors that are from the back of the alley, so activating the back of the alley, and converting this to work new flooring, insulation, drywall updates to HVAC, HVAC, electrical building, electrical plumbing, roof repair facade throughout. In your staff report is, in your packet is the staff report and corresponding architectural materials. The investment does meet the minimum threshold. The current value is $269,000, and with the improvements, it's projected to be $350,000. And we see a value increase for the tax benefit in the future to be around $9,000 annually. The Renaissance Zone Authority did approve this unanimously, and we seek your support tonight. The applicant is present if you have any questions for them as well.
So anyone present who wishes to speak with the Renaissance Zone application? Anyone present wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'd say move.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's a great idea to clean this place up. It looks like it'll be a great project. All right?
Yeah.
You're pleased about it? Yes. Roll call vote, please. You want to speak to the Renaissance?
Yeah. Lennan Holt, I own DH Ventures. And we were told at some point there's a 508 address for the whole property. But we've been getting mail at 508, 510, 512, 514, and 515, which faces Robert Street. So I think we'll figure that out in maybe the permitting side, but I just want to give a heads up that it's not just one property, it's five. Is that right?
Yeah, we can work with the, with you offline with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Renaissance Zone Rehabilitation Project, New Construction Project for Cascade Community Land Trust for Commercial Property at 17, 717 Third Avenue North. Nicole or Megan? It's got you both on here.
Yeah, I guess it'll be me. And so this item's tonight. This is probably a project we've been anxiously waiting for. And this is the property at 17, 717 Third Avenue North. And I'll call this kind of similarly to the trend we're seeing in our Renaissance Zone applications, small but mighty projects, where we're seeing hard-to-develop or hard-to-renovate properties come into fruition to rehabilitation. And so we're excited to see this property. With the current building value is $34,000, but the proposed rehab is $100,000 extra. And so the total investment is $250,000. It far exceeds the minimum threshold and would estimate the property tax value change from $500 to $4,400 approximately. And again, the Renaissance Zone Authority approved this unanimously, and we're seeking your support tonight. Trenton is here today, if you have any questions for him. And glad to answer any questions.
So anyone present wishes to speak to this Renaissance Zone project?
My name is Paul Gley. I'm a neighbor to 717 Third Avenue North. For 25 years, we watched this historic building fall into ruin. Finally, the land trust stepped up to restore it and honor the legacy of architect Milton Earl Beebe. The magnificent temple in a garden, the centerpiece of the Milton Earl Beebe Historic District on the National Register of Historic Places, would live again. And so with deep regret, I ask you not to approve this project as presented today. Rather than restoring it, this project, in fact, will obliterate almost everything that has made this building important. First, it will be moved. The temple in a garden depends on the wonderful axis from Third Avenue, up a sidewalk between two grand lilac bushes leading to the front door. When it's moved, this axis will leave to nothing. The temple in the garden will be no more. Second, the back of the building must be rebuilt. But the architecture of that addition should have some relation to the actual historic building, not a design apparently borrowed from some unrelated building that Milton Earl Beebe designed somewhere else. Third, they will rip off all the historic siding. They'll rip out all the historic windows. Goodbye, historic building. This is the historic view. But when this project is done, it will only have a superficial resemblance to this. Goodbye, National Register of Historic Places. The Renaissance Zone Authority didn't know this. It's buried in the fine print of the application. So I would ask that you not approve this project today. But in return for your subsidy, I would ask that the applicant revisit this project to maintain its eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places and as the centerpiece of the Milton Earl Beebe Historic District. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Trenton, you want to address those issues?
Thank you, Commission, for allowing me to speak. And thank you, Paul, for your, for your words. Certainly, Paul and I and Kay have been working together for, on this project for many years. Now we finally have the funding to, to move forward. To address a few of his concerns, yes, we will be changing the siding to steel siding to, to match with the DMU and the building codes. The windows, we're actually partnering with Marvin, who is a historic, is, actually, has a designation for replacing historic windows. So that's going to be doing our windows. So some of the, the concerns that Paul has will be, will be negated through, through our partnerships and the work that we're doing with some of our other vendors. Yes, we do have to move the building 12 feet over. There is some concerns with the current foundation and where it sits. And so we're moving it over just a little bit to, to provide a brand-new foundation and give it a little bit more space between some of the other houses in there as well. So although the, the sidewalk won't exactly line up, which is a concern of ours as well, we, we have plans to negate that as best we can with other gardens and flowers, those types of things, to bring them back into the, to the front. So you won't be able to see it from the road. But if you drive by today, you can't see it from the road anyway, because all of the trees that aren't on our property have already overgrown it, and you can't see it regardless. So our plan is to clean that up and to, to honor the historical integrity of the building as best we possibly can. But I also understand that we are abiding by current building codes as well as using what we have as far as funds in our partners to make sure we can stick to the historical integrity.
And Trenton, just give your full name and title for the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trent Garrett's Executive Director for Cascade Community Land Trust.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Strand.
I, I would like to disclose that I'm on the Board of Directors for the land trust. And I'm, I don't have a personal, financial, or pecuniary interest, but I do sit on their board. So at this point, I will withhold comment and activity unless you ask me to.
Thank you. Close the public hearing. Nicole, do you have anything else you want to say? Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Pepcorn?
Well, obviously, Paul Gley is the expert, and clearly I'm not. But I was so overjoyed to, it's been 15 years to have this. It's been deteriorating even in, before that. But the pigeons and everything, and it's, it breaks my heart. It's one of my favorite houses in Fargo. I, when my son was a little boy, I drove him. I said, do you want to see one of the coolest houses in Fargo? And that's what I showed him. And so we drive by it all the time, and it's, you're the neighbors, and so you know. It's, it's deteriorating even now. And so I totally agree with what Paul said. It's sad, but, but think of, it's going to be a, a active viable building. And it's just been, and I, of course, it's not going to be the authentic things, but we can't, you couldn't even build that now. And so, I don't know. It's, it's, what's, this is a night of conflict, because it's, we have been, this has been several owners and several runs at trying to, to repair this. And so, to me, and it's the land trust. I mean, it's, it's going to be an active building. So I support it. I would encourage the land trust to do everything you can to, to keep the historic. But the back wall has been blown out. There's literally no back to it. And so, anyway, I apologize for rambling on. But I was, at the Renaissance Zone, that made my whole day. And to have this being, it's a special thing for our town. And so that's my opinion. And thank you for the time, Mr. Chair.
I think just for the public, you know, many people have taken a run at this building over the last 12 years, and we just haven't had nothing stick. So the land trust has stepped in and helped out. And I think you're doing what you can, Trenton, to his amount of money you have, to make this thing work. But we recall several times, it came before us, and we had reports and no progress was made. So it is a step up to what it was, and hopefully that neighborhood will enhance because of that. So it'd be nice. Any other, Mr. Strand?
Just for clarification from our legal counsel, is it proper that I withdraw and, or do we need a motion to engage? I, I just, this conflict interest, I don't want to be hazy about it.
So, Mr. Chair, if, if you asked, I mean, if you need a motion for, like, we've, that's happened in the, in the past, where we allowed a member to vote.
Do I have a motion to allow John to vote? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Okay. Any discussion?
I, I just, it, it's not a conflict like it's a financial conflict. And I, I would appreciate your comment, or we would appreciate your comments, John.
Yep. I'll let you vote first.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. So, John, now you get to vote. Do you want to comment now?
I, I would, I wouldn't mind commenting at all. You know, I, the, the existence and creation and existence of a community land trust is really substantial. Someday, we'll have a land bank. But this is really a, a major move for our city and community, broader community, to go forward. Protecting this historic building is really substantially important. You know, there aren't many buildings as historic as the Beebe House. And Milton Beebe, you know, and his role in our community is just really significant. I, I'm, I've been at the table, and it's not been easy to put this project together. But the notion of having the community land trust placed and housed in a historic building of that character and nature is just exciting and, and all that. So I'm very biased in saving the building, in seeing the land trust move forward, in seeing them have a home. I, I think there are some acknowledgements to be made with the Kilborn Group and Heather and others over the years, who really helped a lot get this building to the point where it's savable and, and they're the future. So I, and I appreciate the, the neighbors' concerns, too, very sincerely. But we've lost so much history. I don't want to lose any more history.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Renaissance New Construction Project for Lenith Lofts, Construction of Multi-Dwelling Residential Project at 2206 Avenue North. Nicole, again, to explain.
Thank you. This item is to construct a new multifamily project. The intent of the project is to demolish the two blighted multifamily homes, one with fire damage, and construct a three-story multifamily building with ground-floor parking and a 22 apartment, with 22 apartment units. In your packet is the architectural renderings for this. The application indicates an investment of approximately $3.4 million, which is approximately $151 a square foot. And the Renaissance Zone recommended approval unanimously on this project. And it should be noted, the next item on the agenda is also, Jim will be here to talk about future tax incentives. So with this proposal, with the Renaissance Zone itself, you look to see a $42,000 increase in potential property value as the project comes to fruition.
So anyone present wishes to speak to this Renaissance Zone project? Anyone present to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Strand.
These are five-year renaissance, but didn't the state allow conceivably to go up to eight years?
The state did allow to go to eight years. The county had to agree to that. The county refused to go to eight years. So it's at five years now.
Can we meet with the county and talk this through?
I believe Gilmore did present to them. I don't know, Bishop Pepcorn, did you talk to them as well?
This is not.
Yeah, I, I presented to them. So, no, I think, and then we just did a plan update at the end of December 2024. Our plan is to, there's a lot of transition happening administratively with elections, et cetera. And so now that we've got a little bit more time, we've meet the plan update deadline is to make amendments to the plan. Once we get our land development code updated, which will also include that holistic view of incentives, and then we'll look at that eight-year plan update. But I think it's definitely worth visiting with the county again. Commissioner Grinberg is now our county commission liaison representative on the Renaissance Zone Authority as well. So definitely discussion for the Renaissance Zone Authority as we move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Just one more, real quick. The land development code isn't going to be done until 2025, or that's kind of, can you talk a little bit about that timeline? Just so this, this isn't going to happen real quick.
Correct. So the land development code update, so just for maybe the public to understand, the EDIC and the RZ Authority, those two groups who look at incentive projects are combined to be a small stakeholder group, along with the Chamber and FMEDC, as we look at issues on what's working and not working in relation to future land development. And so as we look at land development and highest and best use on that land, whether it's for public benefit, public good, or tax, you know, highest value, and then marry that up with zoning standards, land use standards, and community goods as it aligns with the growth plan, that's a process. And so we're just kind of in step one of probably five significant phases of processes. We're just getting the, this is new for everybody and for the public, and just fresh from staff discussion on Friday, and again, from today, is looking at our next round of visits from the consultants are in June. And, but I would say March 26, for anybody listening, we're going to be starting a public, what we call Code Connect, in a public Q and A session that you'll be getting email update to. And so it's basically a virtual Q and A with our consultants and staff. And so you'll start to see a monthly cadence, if you will, of updates as we start getting into that more public engagement space. So I would say early fall, we'll start to see first drafts, if you will, of testing the code and seeing how it fits with the palette of everybody.
Very good. Roll call vote now.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Hearing to consider renewal and plan and developer agreement for Lenith Lofts at Tax Increment Financing District, same area of property. And Jim Gilmore to explain.
This is a request for a tax increment financing exemption. North Dakota law allows tight, or tax increment finance exemptions to be up to 15 years. This would be a total of 10 between the first five years on the Renaissance Zone and the second five years of the TIF exemption that's being requested. And so, you know, it's the same, same project, different types of exemptions. The five-year exemption wasn't going to work for the, the developer. This particular site was, is located, Nicole noted, just northeast of the downtown. The, called it your attention, the downtown infocus plan. They called for this particular property to be a future residential. Here's a picture of the current site. These six-unit apartment building on the right, and I believe it's a duplex on the left. Duplex is boarded up. All the buildings are vacant. There was a fire in this building almost in 2000, almost about five years, or almost five years ago. The building has been vacant since then. The owner of the building at the time of the fire decided not to repair it, instead sold it to a different development group. This Lenith LLC, they are not yet the owner of this building. They would acquire the building, you know, should these exemptions be, be approved. Again, it's been vacant. See some more pictures of the fire. I recall a story about the fire. I think someone had to jump out of the building to save themselves and were injured. The, another close up. This is the proposed new development. We've, we've taken this proposed renewal plan to the planning commission. The planning commission found that this was consistent with our comprehensive plans and downtown plans. It also went to the Economic Development Incentives Committee. You know, they looked at all the extraordinary costs that you have in doing this development, where you need to tear down an existing building, put in new sidewalks, pay for buildings that do have some residual value. The, we sent this to our financial consultants. What they looked at was that the rate of return without the incentives was about 6.5%. Generally, in order to get investment on a project, you're going to need over 10%, or 10% to 15%. And there was about 11% return with the incentives. They also looked at the debt coverage ratio. Debt coverage ratio was generally needs to be below 1.2 at some points. This was barely 1. And so trying to go to the bank and get a loan when you don't have any coverage would be quite difficult. So again, So, again, the, Nicole also mentioned the future property taxes. My, these numbers a little different because current property taxes, not including special assessments, are only 2,100. The city receives about a little over $383 in property taxes. When this is done, you know, our financial consultant said it was going to be worth a little bit more. Future property taxes would be 48,000 total with the city receiving about 8,600. So, the motion is to approve this resolution that adopts the renewal plan and the development agreement with Lenith Loffs LLC. The developer is here tonight if you have any questions for him or if he wants to make any comments.
So, anyone present who wants to speak to this TIF? Anyone present wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
No.
No.
I said second.
Turnberg?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. Jim, I'm just curious, not specifically this project, but ongoing, are we beginning to incorporate more like EV charging discussions for the future and/or in the past? I remember moments where we didn't have accommodations even for like recycling for multifamily homes, places. Are those elements part of our discussions routinely?
I don't think they've been part of our discussions, but I think just some of the newer apartment buildings I've seen have more, you know, amenities incorporated in them in terms of indoor recycling, bike, you know, stations, sometimes EV charging stations, you know, if there's a demand for it. And I should also probably note one other thing. Commissioner Strand, you'd asked about the county. One of the requirements of this process is that we have notified Cass County Fargo Schools and Fargo Parks and invited them to this hearing. So, they would be aware of this hearing. The county would have an opportunity to opt out on the exemption. They have not yet acted on that. They'd like to wait and see what you do before they decide.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Dan, are you okay? You want us to continue?
Keep going.
Okay. Item 34, Presentation of Employee Overtime Policies Procedures Budget. Mike Reddinger to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're going to pull up a PowerPoint slide deck here for you this evening. And we just have a few slides that we want to share with you. I'm going to be joined here momentarily by Susan Thompson, our Finance Director, Jill Manette, our Human Resources Director. And then later, we're going to hear directly from three departments. And I just wanted to highlight some of the work that's happening in our departments. We wanted to create a representative sample of what's happening in our departments to manage employee overtime and talk about that at a policy level. So, really appreciate the time tonight to talk about this important topic and provide some background and information with a view from the departments as well as administration, finance, and human resources. So, these are the presenters that I'll be inviting up in a little bit. You'll hear directly from the Public Works Director, the Fire Chief, and Tom Nockmuth from City Engineering as well. And so, today, we are going to talk about a little bit of behind-the-scenes, look at the numbers, both the programmed overtime as well as the unplanned overtime that occurs in the city budget, how that's approved in the annual budget process by the City Commission, and then also how we balance the expectations of our residents relative to the use of overtime, knowing that overtime in many cases is planned. It's something that's very necessary for us to allow for the continuation and the provision of services in the city of Fargo. And so, again, that's why we really want to hear directly from these departments. And then, I'm going to close out and just talk a bit about some of our future challenges. Our workforce is changing. It's evolving. And with that has come some new challenges, not only with overtime, but as well as additional recruitment and retention of our existing staff. So, with that, I'll invite up Susan Thompson. Susan's going to give us a look behind the numbers and the budget process, and then I'll come back in a little bit after Susan and Jill present.
Thanks, Michael. So, what you see on the screen is a summary of the records that were provided in response to the open records request. So, what this is, it's a summary of 200,000 lines of overtime activity, each instance of a specific type of overtime over the last 10 years. So, it's highlighted in yellow was the headline, more than $31 million in overtime over the last 10 years. It was just pointed me out today, though, that that's actually 11 years. That's beside the point. We also list the percentage of our gross pay, and that was listed at 4.18%. So, based on, we looked at a representation of our peers. Those are listed right there. And we are in line with local and regional municipalities regarding overtime. We looked at West Fargo, Sioux Falls, and Moorhead. As part of administration, as part of the request, administration and HR met with the reporter, and they discussed in generality some of the many reasons that contribute to overtime, and some of which will be discussed later in the presentation. But in preparation for this meeting, I actually quantified some of those explanations and outliers. Due to the complexity of our payroll, we maintain nearly 300 different pay codes to appropriately account for all of the legal policy and other nuances with the vast workforce. So, without digging too deep into that, I summarized specific overtime pay codes that are the result of either policy decisions or reimbursed overtime activity. So, this is that spreadsheet represented in orange. It's 5.7 million that is directly resulting from holiday on-call or call-in pay policies. And in purple is another 4.2 million that's reimbursed by a variety of means. And that, that's a lot of numbers. So, I'm going to simplify that just a bit. So, the net of that, as it's showing, is 21.5 million. So, for the last decade, as we talked about, 31 million in overtime. 10 million of that was either through policy-related items, so 6 million of that was policy. And that is when people, as part of our 24/7, 365 workforce, work on holidays, or they're called in, or they're on-call and miss out on family obligations and other personal issues. Through the policy decisions made by the board, they're compensation compensated with overtime for that time. And then, another four is reimbursed. That's a variety of means. We have disaster recovery, grant funding, pandemic, and then specific billbacks to different entities that use the services, like the airport, Fargo Public Schools, Fargo Dome, or other event promoters. So, for that, you know, the net cost to the city is really zero for those. So, as we said conservatively, then, kind of the net overtime is that $21 million. So, next I want to talk a little bit about the processes, and we'll talk about the budget approvals. This should look familiar to you. It's from the budget that we did last summer. So, the City Commission approves salaries and benefits in aggregate during the budget process. You're approving personnel expenses, which includes salaries total and benefits total for the entire year. The budget details identifying specific division, full-time, part-time, overhead, taxes, pension, health insurance. It's all individually calculated by departments and the budget team. But that minutia is all rolled up into this to come up with the respective funds, salary, and benefit budget, and that's what gets approved through the commission at the aggregate level. The budget book itself provides a little more detail. This, for example, is the water treatment plant. But again, we're looking at salaries and benefits in the aggregate and really for a whole year. It, it's the department heads that are monitoring the specific personnel expense through the parameters that you set up, through your payroll structure, the approved FTEs, and the policies. So, how do we as managers monitor overtime? We have a couple methods. So, we have a timekeeping system, and our timekeeping system allows us to, as managers, to pull up in real time all of our staff's hours. So, we can't, if we're curious on who's working, what they're working on, we can pull this up in real time. And then, if you're not interested in doing that, the system will actually tell you, hey, manager, you have an employee that's worked enough hours that they're approaching overtime. Do you know this? So, those are two methods that we get from the timekeeping system. Most of our employees have, or most of our managers can use this system. We're working to get everyone on the same unified system. That should be happening within the next year. The other way we do this is reporting. I decided if I was going to pull someone's budget report, it better be mine. So, this is the finance report for the month of February, which lists February and year-to-date. All of our department heads get these reports at the end of the month. It details out every general ledger account that we're responsible for, but personnel is right at the top. So, at the very top, it tells you kind of a shortcut. Through February, we have 17% of the year has lapsed. So, if you look down the right side, and also in pink, it gives you what percent of your budget has lapped. So, that's kind of a quick and easy way for you to say, oh, I'm staying in within my budget. What you'll see on there in yellow is one of my non-exempt personnel had some overtime in both January and February, and that wasn't budgeted. We typically don't budget that in finance because we don't use it unless there's extenuating circumstances. Then, if you look above it, it's our full-time staff, and you can see that that's almost $8,000 below budget. So, this kind of tells you in aggregate, we are below budget. This gives you the numbers. It doesn't tell you why. But, so why, why would we be under budget? Or over, over budget and overtime? Why would we use overtime in January? January's a really busy month for finance. You know, we all have our own daily routines, but we do year-end reporting. We start getting ready for the audit. We are legally obligated to provide 1099s and W2s in a very tight timeline. And then, with everyone, there are real-life issues that we face. We have illness, sick kids, went to staff on her honeymoon. We had check printer jams, but technology glitches. The IRS decided they wanted to change the format for uploading the 1099, so we needed to reconfigure everything. I mean, there, there's just real-life situations that we deal with. So, as I said, while, while, while we are overtime, over in, overtime in aggregate, we are well within the budget. So, this is the, the formal report that goes out. But I also wanted to touch on, you know, a lot of departments maintain their own spreadsheets, and I, I thought this was a really good example. The Police Department, they have a lot of overtime, as was mentioned. This is an example. I'm not going to go through all of this, but I think you should see how detailed that they, they do. This is the Neighborhood Services Division, and they explain all the different reasons why they have overtime. And they also put some nice charts and graphs to compare to historic. So, I think from this, I just, you know, want you to know that overtime is not taken lightly, and it is very closely monitored.
All right. Well, as you all know, balancing our community's expectations with our staffing level is, is really important to all of us. Because our community, we serve the community 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year, our department leaders are really regularly assessing, sometimes on a daily basis, whether overtime is necessary to address daily staffing needs, as well as just those urgent or emergency needs that come up. So, determining the appropriate staffing level can really be a challenge. We always want to ensure that we're staffed well enough to meet our ongoing operational needs without being overstaffed. And so, sometimes that means paying overtime to our current staff, where other times, we're able to supplement our regular staff with temporary or seasonal employees. I want to just briefly discuss some of the top factors that contribute to overtime and then provide some more specific detail on just a few of these factors. Overtime is common for organizations that operate 24/7, 365. In many departments, our employees are working shifts where they don't leave until the next shift arrives. And so, if someone calls in sick, or there's just an unexpected absence, that person, that employee on the first shift often will be asked to stay until a replacement does arrive. Lean staffing or understaffing, turnover, leave of absences, and time off, such as vacation and sick leave, are also really key contributors, key contributors to our overtime. So, we'll talk more about those factors in just a minute. But I also just want to mention, you're all well aware, just that unpredictability of our weather or emergency events, as well as those seasonally high workloads, really are all, all factors in overtime. So, in '24, we began the, working on a human capital staffing plan that we're calling Staffing for Success. Our goal was really to identify staffing levels based on industry norms, indicators, and, and sometimes just on our own internal measures. So, I've just pulled a small sample of the departments that you're going to hear from tonight, so that you can see a few examples of our staffing gaps that currently exist. And these gaps, of course, in some departments, really significantly contribute to the actual overtime paid to non-exempt employees. In other cases, these gaps might be filled by exempt employees working consistently over 40 hours to accomplish the workload. Turnover is another significant factor. Like most organizations, we experienced an increase in turnover between '21 and '23. Our retention numbers started to normalize in '24. Unfortunately, we're still below national averages in turnover. But when someone does leave the city, often their work is then shared by their peers, which can result in overtime until that position can be filled. And some of our positions are harder to fill than others and might remain vacant for longer periods of time. And of course, that creates then more overtime. So, our equipment operators, equipment technicians are good examples of positions that have become really difficult to fill. I mentioned earlier that leave of absences are also a significant contributor to overtime. So, this chart shows the number of family and medical leave, military leave, and workers' comp or injury leave cases that we've had over the last three years. As you can see, these numbers have combined, leave case numbers have increased. And in 2024, we had 228 separate leave of absences. And of course, that can have a significant impact on overall staffing and the need to pay overtime to fill those shifts. So, during these leave of absences, we're fortunate that other employees will step in and, and fill in for their peers during these, this time. And then, lastly, I just want to briefly touch on how overtime is paid. Our overtime policy was just reviewed and approved in December of '24. As you know, overtime for non-exempt employees is federally mandated. The majority of our non-exempt employees earn overtime at time and a half, their regular rate for hours that they work over 40. Police officers and firefighters are exempt from regular overtime, but their overtime is calculated on what's called the 207K exemption. So, their, their overtime cycles or FLSA cycles are 27 days or 28 days, and that's how their overtime then is calculated. They also have overtime policies that include scheduled overtime. And hold overtime is paid so that when they're on a call at the end of the shift, they're paid to stay over at the end of that shift. And then, just want to mention exempt employees as well are about 30% of our total workforce. They don't earn overtime unless there's a declared emergency. So, as I mentioned before, many of our exempt employees are regularly working over those 40 hours, especially in some of our leadership positions. 40 hours, especially in some of our leadership positions.
Well, a big thank you to Susan and Jill for that overview, and really all of our departments for helping provide us with a, a lot of information for tonight's presentation. So I mentioned earlier, I just want to highlight three departments in particular where we're utilizing overtime, and then have the departments just provide a little bit of an insight into how that overtime is used in those departments. We'll start first with Public Works. Public Works is a great example of where we're utilizing as many of our staff as possible from all corners of that department to handle snow events or other emergencies that are happening in a Public Works context. That will be followed by the Fire Department. Now, the Fire Department obviously is dealing with an unpredictable event at an unpredictable time, but has to have a staffing level to be commensurate to those events. Then finally, the Engineering Department, I think is a good example of construction oversight, really taking care and consideration from a customer service standpoint, as well as an ownership standpoint, as the owner's rep, making sure that the projects that we are deploying every single year in the city of Fargo are done to spec, done to satisfaction of our contract specifications, and ultimately, our customers, the citizens of Fargo. So we'll start first with Ben on this one.
Good evening, Commissioner. Glad to see you here tonight. I'm very honored to stand in front of you and, and talk a little bit about Public Works. You know, Public Works is really boots-on-the-ground, frontline maintenance, dealing with that customer day in, day out. We not only deal with, you know, streets, snow plows, mowing, and stuff like that, but we also dig deep into our sanitary sewer maintenance, our, our storm sewer maintenance, our water mains. So any infrastructure that you see out there underground is really maintained by our team within Public Works. And with that, you know, we're, we're driven to provide the best service that we possibly can to our residents, while meeting, trying to stay within our budget. You know, our focus remains on providing routine services. There are often situations that occur outside of regular working hours that require a prompt response. As you all know, snow removal is one of the areas that frequently demands overtime. Public Works has worked over the years to minimize staffing requests by leveraging other city divisions within our world. And maybe you didn't know that, but during our weather events, our street operations is really focusing on just our street plowing. We've taken our mains and hydrants division staff, the folks that are digging and repairing our mains and hydrants every day, they're running our alley plows, and they're doing our alleys. And then our forestry division, they're running our sand trucks. And we've done that, to leverage that, to try and minimize our requests for staffing year after year. Now where that becomes a little bit of an issue is when we get to the point where we have some significant weathers, like we've seen in '22, '23. And when we see those, that's when we see our creep in our overtime, because we have to provide the same service at the same level. But 12-inch snowstorms for three days, like we saw in December of 2021, are difficult, and they're hard to manage, and they're stretched out. For oper, for operational context, I'd like to give you a little information about how long it actually takes. You know, when you're looking at a three-inch plowable snow event, it's a five-to-seven-day cleanup. Because from the initial storm, a storm usually lasts 12 hours, 24 hours. So we're really working on cleaning those arterial roadways and plowing them until we can get into our residential neighborhoods. Once we hit our residential neighborhoods, we clean them up fairly quick, about eight hours. But then we, once we finish that, then we have to switch over to our downtown hauling out of our central business district. We haul every bit of snow out of our downtown after every snow event of two inches or more. What that does is that takes about 300 truckloads a night to get it out in four nights. We do the core for the first two nights, and then we move out to the outside. So any three-inch snowstorm, we see that five-to-seven-day pattern where we're running 12-hour shifts for our staff around the clock. Now, if you experience that, it's four to six, eight to 10, 12 inches, we're going to see our arterial roadways need to be hauled. Our roadways are nice and wide, our 45th streets, our main avenues, you know, there's six lanes, seven lanes in some spots. And we have to haul those roads after a significant snow event, so we're prepared for the next one and create more snow storage. That is something that a lot of our overtime sometimes goes to, is preparing for that next snowstorm. We're watching 15 days out. We will see the next one coming in, and we go after and try and make as much room so we're prepared for the next one. You know, extending overtime during severe winters, such as '22 and '23, are hard on our budgets. But they're also extremely hard on our people. We see our people miss Christmases, miss birthdays, anniversaries, and many, many other special events, but they know that's part of the job. It's interesting to see, after we came through those years, we saw a large exit of our staff. And what that was cut, because, and our exit interviews proved it, it's because that time-balanced family wasn't there anymore. We required them to work too much. And so what we're seeing in, in our division of streets is about a 10% staffing need all the time. We're short between vacant positions, FMLA cases, injuries. So we're always running at a 10% reduction of staff. Now, I talked a little bit about running lean before, and that is what happens. We get crippled when that, when we run that lean, and then we have a lot of FMLA cases, illnesses, injuries. You know, snow removal is often the most discussed topic. But it's important to remember that public response to numerous other emergencies throughout the year. These include river flooding, street flooding, freezing rain, tree damage, plug sanitary and storm sewers, water main breaks, frozen water surfaces, pavement blowouts in the summer, vehicle accident cleanups, and even deceased animal recovery. So there's very, very many critical issues we are responding to on a 24/7, 365 basis. Overtime within Public Works is managed with a needs-not-wants philosophy. I know it's hard to believe, but we actually watch it very, very closely, because we're trying to provide that work-life balance for the employee while trying to prevent, give, follow our budget dollars. You know, I'll give you a couple of examples of just last week. We had to pay some overtime, which required for our freezing event, rain event that came in Saturday morning. That was something we had to have staff rolling to, to prevent accidents. We also experienced two water main breaks in after-hours last week. One came this weekend we had to deal with. We had a plugged sewer, we dealt with a homeowner that was experiencing backup in their basement. And we had a contractor bore into one of our water transmission lines, which was a big one, and we dealt with that for late into the evening. You know, not reacting or delaying response to, at times, to any of these issues could result in significant damage to a private property and our public infrastructure. So again, we're on a needs basis, and that's what we focus on at Public Works. I'll turn over to the Fire Chief now.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's good to be here to discuss this with you. The Fire Department, on a regular basis, we utilize overtime strategically to maintain a staffing level of minimum, a minimum staffing level of 32 people across our eight fire stations every day. The staffing model is essential to ensure rapid and effective response to emergencies in the city. The department's standard of response coverage, which you can find on our website and you've seen before, also outlines the critical tasks that must be completed at a structure fire, at a hazardous materials event, at a, at a technical rescue, or at a medical emergency, that they have to be done, and we need to have the adequate and qualified people to staff that so that we can reach positive outcomes and maintain safety for both our residents and our firefighters. Rapid response times are crucial due to the accelerated rate of fire growth in structures, where flashover can occur in three to five minutes. That means a room can be fully involved in fire from the time it starts, three to five minutes later, just because of the new products that are being used in our homes, and in our, in our businesses and buildings in our city. That creates a, an atmosphere that's untenable with life, and so we need to have that rapid response, and we need to have the number of folks there every day. Additionally, when we're talking about cardiac arrest, irreversible brain damage can begin four to six minutes after the patient's heart stops beating. That's why we have strategically placed fire stations around town with a minimum of three firefighters working at each station every day. Meeting these critical timeframes relies on having sufficient strategically positioned staff. Currently, in the Fargo Fire Department, we are 12 people down. We, we've lost a, a number of people. We started a recruit academy at the beginning of January with six people, but they're not working on the shift yet. And so we're down those six people. And since January, we've lost another six that have left and gone to other fire departments around the area and in the region. We also have four members that are on a long-term FMLA. As you can imagine, as, as Ben talked about as well, we have a very physically demanding job, on and off that truck, walking on ice, doing the different things. We have four people that are out on a, on a long-term FMLA. And as you might expect, with fire and police and public safety agencies, we are an attractive work, employment opportunity for people in the military. So we have a number of folks that are in the military that require military leave on a monthly basis as well, that we need to let them go and, and participate. Furthermore, the specialized training that are required for our folks to learn how to become those hazardous materials technicians, structural collapse specialists, trench rescue specialists, a high-angle rope specialist, require going out of town. We don't have those type of facilities to train them. We send them to Texas A&amp;M University on a regular basis throughout the year, different people. But those classes are either from six to 14 days, and they're gone away from the department, which, again, shorts our staffing, and it's compensated. Most of the time, we're fortunate that we can pay for that training and pay for the overtime with grants, so that helps us out there as well. When we also travel to, we send our folks to different trainings at the National Fire Academy. They're six-week programs. You leave on a Saturday, you come back on a Saturday. Hard to manage those staff. We tried to manage it ahead of time and, and give some folks time off earlier in the week prior to leaving, but once they get back, we've already completed that 24, or that 40 hours with their training, and we are unable to accommodate that. The department actively seeks to minimize our overtime whenever possible. A notable, notable portion of our overtime in, in the pandemic time of 2020 to 2023 was our response to making sure that we had people available and, and working and helping our communities. Firefighters worked on their days off in vaccination clinics, clinics allowing hospitals, nursing homes, and clinics to maintain the nursing staff to take care of the critically ill patient during that time. There was a, an agreement through the state that allowed EMTs to be able to give shots, so we were able to participate in that vaccination process, and our folks readily stepped up to the challenge and did those things. The other thing is that the Fargo Fire Department, and I'm sure others are as well, are, we are experiencing a shift in workforce dynamics, as younger members are increasingly prioritizing time with their family versus working extra shifts. This tends to place, place greater pressure onto the more senior members of the department who consequently have been around longer, so they have a higher wage, so they are, they're going to be making more in overtime. They're, they're more than willing to fill those gaps. Balancing their personal needs of new employment, of new employees, with the department, department's operational demands requires thoughtful practices and exploring strategies to distribute overtime more equally. Requiring overtime to receive prior approval from the city commission would cause significant logistical issues. It may necessitate the city commission convening six to seven times a day, just on public safety, with the different shifts at PD, with the times with us, our folks getting an injury or going home sick, whatever it might be. And this would just be to avoid service interruptions, creating substantial administrative burden. In my 13 years here, we've, we've seen the increase in using, in the utilization of overtime. There's only one year that I can remember in the last 13 years that I've been here that we've overspent our budget on the Fire Department, and that was just one instance where we had a lot of people off, the retaining of our employees, we were, we were down a number of folks. And we worked very hard not to pay the overtime because we understand we're spending the taxpayer dollar. We take this very seriously on, in our department, and we try to do our best not to spend any more than what we need to. We remain committed to balancing our fiscal responsibilities and ensuring the citizens of Fargo maintain the department's high standard of emergency response. Thank you. Now I'll introduce Tom Nacmoos.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, I wanted to just say thank you for the opportunity to speak to this item. There are many tasks that we perform within engineering that might lead to overtime. Some are unexpected, things like responding to a traffic signal failure or a streetlight knockdown outside of normal business hours. But most of the overtime in our department is driven by the construction projects that we oversee. Our department is responsible for ensuring that work within the public right-of-way is completed according to the city's plans and specifications. This means our staff must be on-site whenever the contractor is working. Without proper oversight, construction deficiencies could lead to early failures, costly repairs, and higher long-term expenses for our taxpayers. However, with proper oversight, this extends the lifespan of our infrastructure, reduces maintenance costs, and minimizes disruptions for both residents and businesses. Here in the Upper Midwest, we often joke, there's only two seasons, construction and winter. But the reality is, the consort, the short construction season demands long hours on our staff. To complete the necessary work each construction season, contractors routinely work 12-hour days, including work on the weekends, often extending from early morning to late night. If our projects were restricted to a standard 40-hour work week, what should take two weeks could easily stretch into three or four weeks. That type of extended disruption would have significant impact on our residents and businesses. To keep projects on schedule and ensure they're completed efficiently, our team must match the contractor's schedule. However, as we've discussed, overtime comes at a cost. But when you compare it to hiring additional full-time staff, contracting with outside engineering firms, or worse, allowing critical infrastructure to be built without any oversight, it becomes clear that the strategic use of overtime is the most efficient and cost-effective option. One analogy I like to make, just as we don't overbuild roads to eliminate every traffic delay at peak times, we don't overstaff to eliminate all overtime during our busiest months. Instead, we look to maintain a lean and efficient workforce using overtime strategically to meet seasonal demands while ensuring projects are completed on time and to the high standards our city expects. Like I mentioned, though, cost of overtime isn't just financial, it also impacts our employees. I have no doubt that our employees would rather head home after an eight-hour shift. Like us, they prefer spending the summer months with friends and family in the evenings and on weekends, but instead, they're out on project sites, making sure that the infrastructure we rely on every single day is built to last. One last thing I want to say, this city, its residents and its businesses are incredibly fortunate to have dedicated, to have a dedicated team that's willing to make that happen. Thank you.
I just want to thank our departments for providing that brief summary of operations within their departments. I'm just going to close with a couple of last slides and, and just close on this, and that is that really, and it was highlighted by Ben, it was highlighted by Tom, as well as the Chief, that our employees are really desiring a new work-life balance. We have seen, we've experienced firsthand, a real declining interest in utilization of overtime over the last several years. Part of that is not only the new workforce, but as well as our existing workforce, are people that have been with us for, in some cases, decades, that are just saying, I really just want to try to get back to my personal life after hours. The other piece that I highlighted here is that our unemployment rate remains very, very low in Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo. So for our hard-to-fill positions, we really need to be cognizant of what we're asking our people to do, and be respectful of their schedules and of their personal time is of utmost importance for us as an employer. Related to that, we also know, and it's been highlighted by all of our presenters, that our exempt employees as well shoulder quite a bit of burden when we can't fill overtime shifts, or we can't fill hard-to-fill positions. So respecting their roles and their responsibilities is very, very important. They're not receiving extra compensation outside of those emergency events, and so anything that we can do to make sure that we get those individuals home as well, we thank them for their service, because we know that they're not seeing extra compensation. These are really unpredictable tasks, and in many cases, as you heard from our department presenters, they're really happening at unpredictable times. And I would just close on this as well, and that is that all of our supervisors, all the way from the top, all the way to the bottom, are working supervisors. What do we mean by that? We mean that they are showing up and expected to do and backfill the job for the people that they supervise and the people that they have the privilege of leading. So that is a very, very key feature of the city Fargo workforce. Everybody's a working supervisor in that trench alongside their people. At the end of the day, this is about recruiting, retaining, sustaining, and really thriving. I talked about that with our leadership team in the last week. We have to make sure that we're an employer that's allowing our people to thrive, and showing them that they can have a personal life, as well as giving back to the city Fargo. So this is what our department leaders, just two closeout slides here, said verbatim. When we gathered, most recently, for a gathering with our leadership team, talking about, what do you use for a term to describe what you do for the city of Fargo? What does it mean to you? It means, in many cases, about service, it means stability, it means working with professionals, and providing for, rewarding public service opportunity to the citizens of Fargo. And then we also asked then, as a leader within our team, what's the one core value that you would assign for providing high-quality external service? These are their words. And their words were that it was about excellence, it was about And their words were that it was about excellence, it was about dedication, it was about being remarkable, and it was about maintaining professionalism and integrity. And I thought that was really quite illustrative of who we are as a team, and I just very much appreciate all of the help and the assistance that they helped invest into this presentation tonight and everything that they're doing for Team Fargo, week in, week out, and year in, year out. So that is the conclusion of the staff presentation this evening, Commissioners, and I just thank you for the time and for listening to our department heads. Thank you.
Thank you all. Excellent explanation of what's going on. Very much appreciate all the hard work everybody did. Discussion, any questions of the team?
I would just, yes, I would just like to acknowledge that I think what started all of this was a clickbait headline that shocked a lot of residents, and so they immediately are wondering, why are we spending $31 million? Well, how many didn't read the entire article that was 10 years, now 11? We had the most unprecedented four or five years of the pandemic, which caused all sorts of chaos in, in every business across the country, across the world. And all that we're looking for is transparency, to see we're good stewards of taxpayer money, and I think this presentation was absolutely wonderful. It did just that. It showed residents exactly what's being done, we're right on target with, with other cities. So I think it's wonderful. I don't think there's anything wrong with asking the question, why? Where's the money going? We have the answer, and that's our jobs to provide that transparency.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it all adds up, and we learn all the time. You know, one of the things that I'm, I'm very much aware of with other cities across the country is recruiting and retention, recruiting and retention, how to find employees and how to keep them. It's not just us, it's everywhere, you know, and, and so we have issues and challenges in that regard, but some thoughts I'll put out to our team going forward. And a few years back, Commissioner Pepcorn and I were at a National League of Cities, and both of us came home pretty excited about an internship, fellowship program in our, in our structure, you know, and I'd still like to see that. I'd like to see us grow internships, grow fellowships, and then this last League of Cities, I just got back from a national meeting, that's really a major topic, and then they're adding apprenticeships into that conversation, you know, but so, like up in Grand Forks, if I remember, their, their staff hirings come out of their, their feeder system of interns and fellows, like 19% or so of their hires come out of, and, and we're seeing, this is happening, so to our team, let's look at this. Let's look at, at fellowships, internships, growing relationships with young professionals who, who want like a fellowship to work with the mayor, a fellowship to work with the commissioner, a fellowship to work with a department head, internships and apprenticeships. I think that'll, that'll be a way of staving off some of these challenges we were facing going forward with recruiting and retention, but, but it's needed and, and we have to, we get to. Last thing I'll throw in there is artificial intelligence. There's AI activities and efforts across, from other examples of how you can take some of the rock-crunching undesirable work and assign it over to AI, for example. These are ways we can grow our, our, our services without necessarily growing all of our full-time employees. But that's, that's thoughts, and, and thanks to the, this is a good discussion. It's, it's important for us to know how the private sector feels, you know? It sounds, it sounds awfully alarming to, to see these numbers as they are, but it's, and their worlds aren't the same as ours. We get to, and we need to, the bottom line, we have to pull in our belts and provide more services, so how do you find that balance going forward? But thanks to the staff and to the team for providing this background for us.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Mr. Chair, thank you. That was an excellent report. Thank you for doing that, and my requests going forward are what I like to receive as a monthly summary of the overtime by department, and then also, this is great timing, and what I'd like to see is a breakout of overtime in each of the departments in the budget going forward. Obviously, what Susan showed us, it's the overall salaries. I would like to see each department, what, what the overtime budget is going forward. So I'm looking forward to that in the budget for next year. Thank you.
That can be incorporated fairly easily. Thanks to the team for doing an excellent presentation. I think the public and the Commissioners have a better idea of the overtime and how it's utilized. I've spoken to the mayor of Duluth, the mayor of Sioux Falls, and they actually are a little bit higher than us, and it's nice to see refreshed that we're doing a great job with our peers as well as what we're doing in our community. I would like to thank all the employees because I think Ben got it right, is it's the middle of the night, there was a water break over this weekend, we had 10 houses that were affected by it, our team was out there right away, and it's a little bit complex to me is how many water drains, you gotta, gotta turn down the water here and there and find out where the leak is. You gotta remember it's underground, and oftentimes it's 20 below. It wasn't this weekend, but oftentimes you're in elements that aren't easy to figure out. I asked Brenda, is it really easy to find that water leak down there? And she kind of shrugged her shoulders and said it's, it's sleuth, you gotta be kind of a smart person to figure out where the water's coming from.
So easy for Brenda.
So thank you, all of you. All of you get up in the middle of the night, all of you do the things extra for our community and for our residents. Very much appreciated, and any line of business in our, in our services, city, I want to congratulate you all for all the great work you do for our community and our people.
Mr. Chair, can I say a couple things? Thank you. Yes, I really appreciate the presentation, the information. I'm sure putting this all together took also a lot of time and probably some overtime to get this done over the weekend and, and last week, in addition to your regular responsibilities. So first of all, Tom, city engineer, one of those water breaks, residential water breaks was across the street from my house last Sunday, and you were, your team was out there getting ready for early construction the following Monday morning. So I witnessed it firsthand, and I can tell you, the residents across the street were very appreciative that you showed up on a Sunday afternoon, who stood on their porch all day trying to get, you know, help that showed up right away. Appreciate that. So I want, I want to start with a big thank you to everyone who chooses to work in public service because it is a choice, and we're every day competing with you against private industry and now other municipalities across our region. I see it every day in fire and in other departments. It's a real challenge, and without the commitment of work from our Team Fargo and this, and the employees who choose to work for Fargo, we wouldn't have services, we wouldn't have a city. 75% of our budget is staffing and benefits, and it's because operations have to run daily 365/7, as we have said. So I sincerely thank you all for choosing to work for our citizens. I also want to thank the great leadership and management of oversight, of, of overtime. It truly is a tool in your toolkit, but part of it also is because we're clearly understaffed in departments. I know last year, there were many requests to add additional staff, certainly in all five of my departments, and none of that got approved, with the exception of fire, adding a new fire station. And so, you know, you're seeing the result of that tension and pressure of managing the tax dollar, but delivering services. And I know there's also an eye constantly on increasing efficiencies, to Commissioner Strand's point about technology. It is, it is so important. I will end also, in addition to thanking you for choosing, I truly see every day that you're also committed to excellence in the work that you do for the citizens of Fargo, and some of that best-in-class approach. For instance, there's real tangible results of that. ISO-1 certification in the Fire Department means lower insurance rates across the commercial and residential properties in Fargo. So there are real results of the excellence that you bring. I know Fargo is a model city across the region. It was nice to see the peer data, and we're certainly, and we're under really on average of, of our peer cities in the use of overtime. So I'll just close with a big thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Mr. Pepcorn, you had a motion last time about what we wanted to do on overtime. What would you like to do with that motion?
No, I, I did not put that on the agenda this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Stand to correct, it was tabled for the last meeting to come back to this meeting, and I think Robert, through his order, don't we have to vote or do something with it?
It's on the agenda, so we did put it on this agenda, so I would suspect that adequately addresses that. You, you raised the issue, we tabled it to this meeting, it's on the agenda, we've discussed it.
Just to go ahead, do you want to do anything with it? If you don't, we'll move on. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to say one more thing, just as long as we're at it. In this world we're in today, we really have a lot of folks that don't trust the media and the fourth estate, and I'm a fourth estate guy. That's the job of the media, is to tell us and see what others don't see, you know? So it's tough at times to have stuff put back into our, reflecting back on to us, but, but that, that's the way it works. You know, we have other examples in the country of people who are disagreeing with the media and saying, well, you're no longer allowed in our room even. You know, and that is happening in the country right now, today. You know, so I celebrate the fourth estate. I, there's the three branches of government and there's a fourth branch of government. Whatever it is, it is, it's all good for us as a community to have the interaction. Well, two of us are here, are media people, you know, in fact, but, but so this is their job and this is our job and we all coexist together, and, and you know, this discussion came our way because somebody out there said, you really need to talk this over. Thank you for doing that, I say back.
Except, there's, there's news and non-news, and this is clearly non-news because there's nothing unusual about it. It's within the parameters of every other city, there's not, it was, in my opinion, having been in the media for about 20 years, blown out of proportion. So I feel like it got people thinking that there was a big problem when there really wasn't one. That's my concern with it. And yes, we could have a long discussion about media, but we'll save that for coffee.
We'll let you media guys go at it after the meeting. Liaison reports, Chris Strand.
I'd like to just let folks know that I, this last week with the National League of Cities in Washington DC, the North Dakota delegation, we met with Senator Hoven. Senator Hoven really delivers. I'm, I, he, I told him we have him on speed dial, you know, but he really delivers, he watches out for us in ways that are just so gratifying. Congresswoman Fedorchek is, is new and, and is going to be a real delight to work with. We also met with Senator Kramer's staff. And last thing, nobody knows in DC where we're all at right now. I mean, it's just, everything's up in the air, but, but the message I saw and heard from our congressional leaders is, keep us apprised of what's at risk. If you hear of programs being cut, or if you hear of fundings and grants being lost or at risk, let them know so they're aware of it and can help intercede on our behalf as, as much as possible, because nobody knows, you know, where things are going to go and where things are going to land. And we're used to seeing DC kind of seem paralyzed, but it's a different thing right now, and, and the budget cuts and the grant cuts and the funding cuts and the, all that stuff, but we, North Dakota League and I were there and, and the congressional leadership was real responsive to our issues, water issues, diversion issues, you know, they're, they're on, they're on it with what our needs are relative to what's the chaos they're facing too.
Mr. Goepke.
Yeah, I have a fun update tonight. Having grown up in Hockey Town, USA, East Grand Forks, Minnesota, excuse me, I wanted to start by congratulating the Morehead Spuds High School Boys Hockey Team. They beat Stillwater 7 to 6 to win their first Minnesota State Championship at Excel Energy Center in St. Paul on March 8th. True congratulations are in order for the, for the players, the, the fans, the parents, and the town, so congratulations to our sister city. And then also deserving, congratulations is owed to the East Grand Forks Green Wave Boys Hockey Team, who also won in the small school class. These two teams are from the Red River Valley and have made the Fargo-Morehead communities proud and the whole region extremely proud. So congratulations. Go Green Wave.
So because you do the water department, you think you're responsible for ICE, for hockey?
Absolutely.
We had a hearing today on tax out of a 3% cap. That's been something that has been a concern for the City of Fargo, and the legislative body heard us. The commission had voted a new proposal, which is a CIP plus 2% with a cap of 6%, which Commissioner Greenberg, Greenberg is putting out there. I just want you all to be aware of that, that that's a discussion, and the discussion is, is that in a growing community of Cass County, South Fargo, West Fargo, and Horace, a 3% cap doesn't keep with our growth. So the concern is on our budget, as all you want to know about coming up in the Commissioners, is our budget might be limited by a 3% cap on property tax. So it's just something you need to be aware of and have some thoughts about if you can weigh in on those particular items, think about it. Mr. Turnberg.
No update.
Commissioner Pepcorn. Okay, we have one resident speaker, Olivia Fisher.
Hi, my name is Olivia. I'm a Fargo resident. I'm speaking today because of a tragedy that occurred in this town. In November last year, a 65-year-old veteran named Peter Greco called the police for help due to struggles with suicidal ideation. Later that day, he was shot four times on his own property by two cops. For context, Peter had made threats that he was going to hurt the police with a firearm when they arrived at his home. Instead of taking precautions to ensure that the threat wouldn't wind up hurting anyone else in the area, Fargo PD straight up refused to go to his house until he called in with a different story. Then he called again and said he had fallen and needed help. According to Chief Savalsky, this was Peter's 53rd call since 2008, and most of these calls had been due to mental health crises where he sometimes made similar threats. So to me, it doesn't take police training to put two and two together. This man clearly wanted the cops to harm him, and he was more of a threat to himself than anyone else, especially if he had never followed through on prior threats. Sergeant Lucas Mock and Officer Princeton Harris still chose to shoot Peter four times. After that, they realized the firearm he pointed at them was actually just a BB gun, but by then it was too late. It is so angering to see the city push more funding to the police force when this is what they do. In a 2021 study, it was found that people in the US that are struggling with their mental health are 10 times as likely to obtain injuries during interactions with the police. And according to studies from 2015 to 2020, one out of four fatal police shootings involved someone with a mental illness. The Attorney General has said himself that officer-involved shootings are an epidemic in North Dakota. If these officers thought Peter was going to shoot them, why did they not show up with more protective gear? Were four gunshots really necessary? Did they intend to talk with him at all? Because to me, it seems they came prepared to kill. The police cannot be reformed, they do not handle mental health struggles with compassion. I have witnessed this lack of humanity firsthand during interactions with North Dakota police in the past. I and others in this community demand better from the city. We demand that you advocate for the safety of your residents by having mental health professionals respond to crises like these. Instead of throwing all this money to the police, it should be used for non-violent conflict mediators that are trained in de-escalation. We also demand accountability from the Fargo Police Force. You say your job is to protect, but a man is dead and the officers that killed him are back at work. Peter should be alive today, and he deserved to get the help he needed. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
We have no other speakers. We're adjourned.